Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First in the agenda, community announcements.
Doug?
I guess the only community announcement I have is that we'll be closed on Thanksgiving and on the day after Thanksgiving, Friday, so I don't have my calendar in front of me, but I think that's the twenty-seventh and the twenty-eighth, twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. So it'll be closed Thursday and Friday. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Thank you, Doug. Next on the agenda, minutes from eleven forty, two thousand twenty-five, I want to make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Yep.
And John, thank you, John, thanks for pointing that out. Next on the agenda, new business, community preservation committee appointments, Matthew Fennel and Rick Snead, seeing none in attendance, I think. Have both the committees, the committee has signed off on it, right?
They have. It looks like they weren't able to come tonight, I know you know.
Yep, I know both of them.
Yep.
Anybody have any questions, concerns about the two applicants? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Thrilled to have those seats filled.
Okay. Steve, I'm assuming that's a motion?
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Motion to approve. Sorry, you said comments.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor? That is unanimous. All right, next on the agenda, regional social worker introduction, Lorena Rocha.
So as Lorena, if you could step up, come up there to that mic, I'll just do a very brief introduction for her. So as the, as the board and the community knows, our health agent, Delshaun Flip, was able to get a regional public health excellence grant, and Rockland is now the lead community heading up this grant initiative for, I think it's five or six different towns. So as part of that state-funded grant, we were able to hire a social worker that Lorena will explain what she does, but we're very fortunate to have her on board, she's adding a lot of value for the community. And if you could just take a few minutes and just kind of introduce yourself and explain what you're doing for all the communities.
So like we said, like, my name's Lorena Rocha, so I'm the new hire. I was hired through this PH grant, so I'm supposed to serve not just Rockland, but five different towns, Hanover, Noel, Pembroke, Marshfield. I've been staying mostly here in Rockland, and I'm happy to be here. This, I live in Abington, so here's very close, and this is the town that I'm very fond. I go to the church across the street, I have many friends here. So I've been around, like, this week I went to the fire department, I met with Scott, we have great plans to come back and see how we can help them out. I already spoke with the lieutenant at the police department, because they haven't hired the clinician yet. I work on the, on the Plymouth as a co-response as well, so I kind of know what this job entitles, so I said to him that when he hires somebody that I can help out, or until he hires somebody, I'm more than help to help them out as well. I've been to, I met the social worker at the school, I was there last week, we discussed how I can take some of, how can I help her not, because she's been like, not just the social worker from the school and serving the kids, but she's also been helping the families, so she's already made some referrals. I contacted some of the residents that she referred me to, to help out. I've been going with the nurse, because also through this grant, there is a nurse that was hired too, like, she's part-time, but she's, we've been working together long to see how we can do, like, some part of education. We have some plans to help out with, like, some opioid addiction, like distributing some of the narcotics and some of the other programs that we can help out at the town. So they've been doing, like, blood pressure check at the senior centers, the ACO, I'm going there this Thursday, so I have a plan to go back there. So they go every two weeks, usually they go and do their blood check, and I do checking with the folks there. I also have a meeting, come up with Tim from the veterans, to see how we can help them out as well. So I've been, I've been around, I've been trying to see. I also speak Portuguese and I speak Spanish, so I want to see how I can use my language to help the folks and to break some barriers. You guys have any questions?
Any questions for Lorena?
It's just, it's just fabulous that you're here, and you just, I, I, I had a guess you're going to be extremely busy handling.
That's my point. That's why, because I, I, I've been around, like, I, I worked for eight years at the Brockton Neighborhood Health Center, so I know a lot of Brockton. I work with the police in Plymouth, I work at Pembroke Hospital, so I'm glad to be here, like, closer to home.
Yeah, yeah, and, well, it, it, it doesn't seem like you'll be bored at work, with your job, and that's amazing that you speak Portuguese and Spanish, because we have a significant Brazilian population in Rockland.
Yeah, that's where I'm from, I'm Brazilian as well.
Yeah, yeah, so, and...
So we're excited to have the stroll, like, we're going to be tabling at the stroll, so we have some handouts that we want to make people aware that we exist and how they can use us.
Well, welcome aboard.
Thank you, thank you.
That's great.
Anybody else?
I, I'd like to also chime in, it's, it's a pleasure to meet you, welcome, and looking forward to seeing all, all that you do.
Yeah.
And I, I think it's a phenomenal move on, on the town's part to be able to provide your services to help enhance so many of the departments, so thank you, and the community, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, Lorena, welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for coming.
All right. Next on the agenda, I want Mr. O'Donnell to take a quick sip, because as the newest member and as the official voice of Rockland, from what I understand, going to allow you to have your little opening here, annual license renewals. Thank you for volunteering.
There you go, welcome.
Can I just say one thing before Steve reads anything? You'll notice at the bottom, there's two establishments in red, so they're not on the list, so I don't want you to read those, and I can just explain them quickly. The first is Monero's Steakhouse on Union Street, they have chosen not to renew their license, so I think they have other plans they're working on, but they have not requested a renewal, that's their decision. As it relates to the banner, they did submit a renewal application on the ABCC form, we're holding that back because their license is an in holder's license, and as the board knows, they're not operating an in, and we haven't seen any evidence that they're actively improving that space to make it an in that would, is the purpose of that license. They did get the paperwork into us by the November thirtieth deadline, so I'm, we're going to check with council. I do think if miraculously something happens and there's significant activity happening and you deem it appropriate, you might be able to vote that next month, but I just wanted you to understand that, you know, Monero's is not requesting a license, and the banner is requesting it, but it's an in holder's license, they're not operating an in, so it just doesn't seem legal to authorize that.
Okay, thank you, Doug.
Do we put this in the form of a motion?
Just, you just say pending all obligations are met, you...
Yes, a motion, but yeah.
Well, no, I, I, I guess I'll make a motion after, so, so just pending all obligations are met, pouring permits will be completed by the building and fire departments by November thirtieth, and these are the places we're speaking of. All right. Pending all obligations have been met, pouring permits will be completed by the building and fire departments by November thirtieth. All alcohol club. Fraternal Order of the Eagles, area number eight forty-one, Twenty-Nine Park Street. Harmon Golf and Fitness Club, one sixty-eight Concord Street. Old Colony VFW Post, number seventeen eighty-eight Incorporated, Twenty-two Church Street. All alcohol, common victueller. China Plaza Restaurant, Thirty-Five Market Street. Lucas South, nine thirty-three Hingham Street. Ninety-nine Restaurant, Twenty-nine Accord Park Drive. Players Sports Bar and Grill, eighty-six VFW Drive. Rockland Golf Course, two seventy-six Plain Street. Top Shelf Bistro, one twenty Bill Delahunt Parkway. TK O'Shea's, nine thirty-four Hingham Street. Stevie G's Restaurant, three seventy-two Market Street. Anita Marie's Breakfast and Lunch, three forty-five to three forty-nine Union Street. All alcohol in holder, Double Tree by Hilton, Rockland, nine twenty-nine Hingham Street. Wine and Malt Common Victueller. Mike's Pizzeria, three fifteen Union Street. Space Bistro, three twenty-three Union Street. All alcohol package. Fast Lane Liquors and Grocery, number two, nine twenty-four to nine twenty-six Hingham Street. Luke's Liquors, one sixty-seven Market Street. Rockland Liquors, three forty-seven Market Street. Station Liquors, twenty-one East Water Street. Union Street Package, three twenty-eight Union Street. Wine and Malt Package, seven eleven, ninety-two Market Street. Easy Mart, three thirty-nine Center Avenue. Richdale Food Shop, four seventy-four Market Street. Sam's Food and Smoke Shop, two hundred VFW Drive. Quick Stop Gas and Convenience, two forty-six East Water Street.
Very good.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. Next on the agenda, one day local license request, holiday stroll, Olivia.
Hi, everybody, how are you?
Good, Olivia, welcome.
I'm here for the one day local license for the stroll for Players Sports Bar, the Abington Depot, and we have Three Sips Brewery, they're out of cover, I don't know if anybody knows, and one, the owner is a young man from Rockland, so kind of...
Oh, cool.
Right there, yeah, so, November twenty-ninth, three to six.
Okay, so this is very standard, you're very familiar with Olivia coming up here and begging us for licenses, so, anybody has any questions, concerns?
Paperwork's in order.
Yeah, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all of those in favor?
Yep.
That's unanimous, thank you, Olivia.
Thank you. See you soon.
Okay, I guess I'm going to read the next one. One day liquor license request for a sip and shop on eleven thirty, two thousand twenty-five, twelve PM to four PM, Players Sports Bar and Grill, Rockland Garden Center, Sixty Center Avenue. Any questions? Can, can you tell us about the sip and shop?
Well, I was planning on abstaining, because I'm not allowed to pull my business from here.
Oh, right, oh, okay.
Thanks.
Yeah, well, sip and shop is, I guess, when you go in and drink wine and shop, so, and, and I can say that the, the shop that Valerie O'Loughlin runs at the Garden Center has the cutest things, and I encourage everybody to go there and check it out, it's really great, so, okay, do I hear a motion to approve the sip and shop at the Rockland Garden Center on eleven thirty, two thousand twenty-five? And a second?
A second.
Okay, everybody in favor?
All in favor.
All in favor, yep.
And I'll abstain.
And Michael, okay, great.
Thank you, word.
You're welcome.
Next on the agenda, town planner update, Allison Quinn, Allison?
Good evening, thank you for allowing me to come before you tonight and give you a quick update to, as to where we are in the planning department. First, I'm going to go through some grant awards that we got to give you guys a little bit of good news, I hope. We got a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar municipal vulnerability, vulnerability preparedness action grant. We got that along with Abington, the project title is nature-based stormwater resilience, and it is to look at our watershed assessments through environmental partners, they worked with us on our illicit discharge detection elimination plan. This plan highlights several system vulnerability factors tied to wet weather, outfall, that the towns would like to address through this opportunity. This proposed project supports the collaborative regional approach between Rockland and Abington to manage stormwater resiliency and take preventative action against flooding. We also got, these next three are kind of banded, they were all awarded through the Community One Stop for Growth. We got an eight hundred thousand dollar Community One Stop for Growth through the Housing Works Infrastructure Program. This is to support a feasibility study in an area identified in a previous sewer commission report that is adjacent to the MBTA communities or mud zoning, as we adopted it, for potential sewer capacity upgrades in that area. We also received a fifty thousand dollar Community One Stop for Growth of refundable tax credits from the state for Massachusetts vacant storefront program that has been approved to support the occupancy of long-term vacant storefronts in the, in the Union Street corridor. We received twenty-five thousand dollars in additional funding to support our work with the Metropolitan Area Planning Council for the housing production plan and open space and recreation plan to align the community engagement process through a cultural lens. I'm also going to be applying for an additional twenty thousand dollar for a land conservation grant to fill the gap funding for those two concurrent plans, and I also applied for a technical assistance project funding through the MAPC to help support the fifty thousand that we got through the state for, like, an implementation plan. We are finalizing a contract with the Metropolitan Area Planning Council to run the open space and recreation plan and housing production plan simultaneously. MAPC has come up with the kind of, they're calling it rooted in Rockland, to capture the nature of both of these things happening at the same time. We've an updated contract that reflects the addition of an arts and cultural component of the planning strategy. This contract also reflects a more robust community engagement plan. In that same effort of a robust community engagement, I co-hosted the first planning on the go community meeting with our partner, Mayflower Services, they're located on Union Street. The first meeting was centered around accessory dwelling units, it was held up at the library. We're hoping to take more opportunities to collaborate, to reach our Portuguese-speaking populations, so that they feel like they can come to Town Hall and get more information on things that impact their land. I am waiting for boards and committee interest forms to get sent back in from those local residents and business owners who expressed interest in participating on the zoning bylaw review committee. I'm currently researching some framework for best practices around the specific topics that will be explored by this committee, which include the potential expansion of the forty R district, assigned bylaw, at-home accessory and ancillary uses, and emerging uses. I successfully applied for a three-year extension to the town's existing open space plan, which expired July twenty twenty-five, so it's already expired, but that bridges the gap between now and twenty twenty-eight, so we have time to get our updated plan in place, so we don't miss any funding opportunities. And that's all I got for you.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Allison?
Yes, well, it's a comment. You're kicking butt, this is, this is awesome that we got all this grant money. I mean, I, I talked to other towns and town administrators at times, and they, they are kind of lost, because they don't have a team like you and Courtney to coordinate this, so kudos to both of you, I just wanted to publicly tell you that you're very much appreciated.
I appreciate that, I, I will say, I feel like Rockland has a lot to offer as far as, you know, that, that regional lens, and I, I think that this is just a great opportunity for us to be able to identify those spaces and be a little bit more aggressive about...
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's pretty cool, I mean, you, Doug, Courtney, don't live in Rockland, but I feel like you're in our cheering section, like, always, so...
Definitely in the cheering section.
So it's great, thank you.
Well, thank you. Does anyone else have any other questions?
Anybody else? All right, seeing none, thank you, Allison.
Okay, thank you. You guys have a great night.
All right, next on the agenda, other new business not reasonably anticipated, Doug?
I have none.
Okay, next on the agenda, old business, okay, so town administrator contract. Prior to the meeting, the select board participated in the executive session, where we spoke about a contract that was presented to us by town administrator Lap for a new contract to begin on July eighth of two thousand twenty-six, at the expiration of his existing contract. The new contract would be a two-year and fifty-one-week term, just to clean up the start date and end date to line, align with the fiscal year, the beginning of the fiscal year. And it was a two and a half percent increase for each year, plus the two percent annually deferred of a salary to a compensation plan for retirement. So with that, there was a couple small language things that we, we changed in just the language of the agreement, that will be turned over to town council to review and make those changes, that they have been agreed to by the town administrator. So with that, I will entertain a motion to accept the contract, the terms of the contract, and create a new contract with Doug Lap to begin on July eighth, two thousand twenty-six, and run until June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-nine. I want to entertain a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor? All those opposed?
And just to be clear, I'm voting no on this, not because I don't want Doug to be here, Doug's doing an excellent job, my objections to this is solely based on some of the provisions in the contract, I'm not going to bother getting into it, because what's the point? So, but anyways, so I'm a no.
Okay, thank you, John. As we said back there, we appreciate your feedback and feedback of everybody else on the board, and we're glad we were able to get this done. Doug, we're looking forward to another three years with you, which, you got what, ten years at that point?
Yeah, almost, it's been six and a, over six and a half now.
Yeah, so by the time this is over, it'll be ten years, so...
Time flies.
Wow, crazy. Wow, so, all right, with that, moving on. Other old business not reasonably anticipated, Doug?
I have none.
Okay, town administrator, your court and correspondence?
Thanks, Mike, and I thank, thank the board for my contract extension, I appreciate it very much, I enjoy working here, and glad to continue in this role. Couple of things, on a staffing note, we have hired what we're calling the Planning and Zoning Project Liaison position, that was the position that was previously filled, we called it the Land Use Coordinator, so we're changing the name and realigning some of the duties a little bit, that position is vacant, so we're, it's not a new position, we're filling a vacancy. That person will start on December first, and related to that, if you bear with me, I can explain this, I'm pleased to announce that we will be moving the veterans' agent back to Town Hall from the senior center, and it's all kind of connected, there's a whole bunch of moving parts that all have to work sequentially, but basically what's going to happen is the, the new project liaison will work in the planning and zoning office where that person, previous, the previous person had worked. The town planner, Allison Quinn, who just spoke a few minutes ago, she's going to move from her office and share the office space with the project liaison, it's a large enough space that can fit two people. And then in addition, the community development block grant consultant vendor that we use that has a dedicated office space is going to move out of that office, and they will work out of our downstairs conference room when they're here, which is generally one day a week, so that frees up two small offices. So the veterans' agent will come to Town Hall, work in what was the town planner's office downstairs, and then he'll have the old CDBG office space for client file storage and all the other equipment storage that he has. So there's a lot that has to happen in a certain order, so I, I can't guarantee exactly when the veterans' agent will be in, we're going to be getting some equipment for CDBG to be able to, be able to set up in the conference room and break down, so it's a little bit different than a traditional office, but we're very pleased about that, and I think it'll give, not just the veterans' agent, but it'll give, most importantly, the clients that he serves, you know, a more appropriate space than the, than the space that he had at the senior center. There were a lot of great benefits to being at the senior center, but there just weren't enough offices to really do it right, so I'm, I'm pleased that we'll be making that change. Next, as a follow-up to the fire station owners' project manager procurement, as I think I mentioned before, we got ten proposals, we narrowed it down to four firms that we interviewed all day last Friday, and these firms are excellent, we have four top quality firms, so we really can't go wrong, hopefully next week we'll be able to select the firm that we'll end up working with, and then we're off and running, and, and some of the initial tasks will be obviously executing a contract with the OPM, having the OPM help us review the architect's proposed fee for the duration of the contract, because that's a, a large contract, and then helping us with the demolition of the Lincoln School Building, there's a lot of logistics and oversight that we need, bless you, on that, and then, of course, getting, working with our team and with the architect on final design and, and getting us through the rest of the project, so that's very exciting. As far as meetings go, we have a finance committee meeting tomorrow night, the town accountant's going to cover that, because I'm going to be at a conservation commission meeting for the bicentennial track project, we're going for conservation, because it abuts wetlands, we have an excellent engineer who's, you know, kicked on everything by the numbers, and, so I'm looking forward to that meeting tomorrow night, and then lastly, I'll be out of the office on Thursday and Friday at the Mass Municipal Managers Association Fall Conference, that's all I have, thanks.
Thank you, Doug. Next on the agenda, select board comments, comments and opinions expressed by individual members do not necessarily reflect the views of the select board and are the opinions and comments of only the individual member. Select board member, O'Donnell?
First, Doug, congratulations, well-deserved contract extension.
Thank you.
I want to congratulate all of Rockland's fall sports team for their postseason runs, players of both the high school and youth levels worked hard and should be proud. This is especially true for cheer and soccer, high school varsity boys soccer is headed to the state championship, as well as high school varsity cheer. Congratulations to all three levels of Rockland youth cheerleading on winning their OCYCA championships. Next, I want to bring attention to why I'm growing a mustache in November. During our first November meeting, it was barely distinguishable, now it's a bit more apparent. For thirteen years, I've grown a mustache to raise funds and awareness as part of the Movember campaign for men's cancer research and men's mental health. I'd like to talk a bit about the latter. For too long, men have been told to stuff their emotions down, men don't cry. As a result, the only emotion that was socially acceptable was anger. Anger was seen as strength. As I age and work on my own mental health, I now see anger as a weakness, it clouds our judgment, it causes fear in others and fosters hate. The state of our national politics is driven by fear and hate. One can look at any news website today, at the stories coming out of Washington, and easily find it in the headlines. This fear and hatred has caused communication and bipartisanship to stall, we're all too busy shouting our own opinions instead of listening with compassion for understanding. If we are to move forward as a united country and a united people, communication must be restored. As we prepare for Thanksgiving, many of us will be thrust into uncomfortable conversations with relatives we don't agree with politically, many of them will be regurgitating lines from their news channel of choice. I want to challenge everyone to not immediately react, but to listen intently with compassion. Instead of fighting back with talking points of your own, dig deeper, ask why they hold these beliefs, do it with compassion and love, with a goal of understanding. This simple question, why, does two things. First, it challenges the person to think a bit more deeply about their stated position. Second, it allows you to understand the motivating, motivating factors behind what they believe. There's a third thing that sometimes happens, can reveal to that person who has stated a position on a topic, that they don't know why they believe what they're saying. Though it's unlikely they'll admit it in the moment, this may manifest as anger, the best way to diffuse the anger is to offer to talk about something else. This exercise can build a bridge for future dialogue with you and others, it opens the door, sometimes the door slams shut, but that's where the conversation, conversation began anyway, but for a moment, the door cracked open. Contrast this with avoidance of conversation or an argument, where both sides project their beliefs to one another in fruitless fashion, where nothing is gained. This tool of why is powerful, and can be applied in multiple facets of daily life. I came to the idea while working with my daughter on a homework assignment, the answers were multiple choice, at times she was guessing at answers, I would ask her why she thought that was the answer when she selected the wrong one, she figured me out pretty quickly, so I started asking why, when she selected the correct answer, she would change it, and I would ask again. Finally, she explained why she thought the first answer was correct. I told her that asking and answering herself this question would allow her to find the correct answer, if she could explain why, then she understood the concept, would have likely found the correct answer. A few weeks later, I was speaking with a friend, this was shortly after Zoran Mamdani was elected, excuse me, mayor of New York City, he asked me, can you believe Mamdani was elected? I answered, yes, people are angry and want change, it's the same reason Trump was elected, even though they're on opposite sides of the political and ideological spectrum. He responded, no, he's a communist. I asked him why he thought he was a communist, he paused for a moment and asked, and answered that he had heard he was a communist. Even though they're on opposite sides of the political and ideological spectrum. He responded, no, he's a communist. I asked him why he thought he was a communist. He paused for a moment and asked, and answered that he had heard he was a communist. I told him he marketed himself as a democratic socialist, which is very different from a communist. I then told him the story of my daughter doing homework. I told him I was happy to discuss it more. But first, he needed to be answer, be able to answer why he thought Mamdani was a bad choice for the people of New York City. But the reason couldn't be, because my news of choice said so. People are easily swayed when they're angry or fearful. We naturally fear things that are different, or things we don't understand. They'll grasp onto people who tell them things they want to hear. If their anger is echoed by those seeking power, the proposed solutions seem like good ideas. Even if those ideas will negatively impact those same people. If we begin to understand that mental health is the driver, the broken nature of our country, we can start the conversation again. Begin from a stance of compassion and love, with a goal of understanding. Rebuild the bridges that once connected all of us. Find commonality in our daily struggles. As we head into this holiday season, I hope we find ways to come together and heal. To reignite the exchange of ideas that make this nation great. To remove the fear of which we do not understand, and to move past anger into true emotion that led you there in the first place. Mental health is a key determinant of overall health. Maintaining a healthy mental state is much easier with loved ones conversing than strangers arguing. And for those struggling with your own mental health, talk about it. Do not let pride stand in the way of seeking help. Pride won't be there to help you when your thoughts turn darker. I'm happy to personally lend an ear to anyone struggling, or to privately share my own mental health journey. Lastly, I hope everyone has a happy and safe Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Well said, Steve. Uh, but that's why you grew a mustache?
Mental health.
Oh, okay, all right. Uh, John, follow that.
Once again.
Your favorite spot.
I love following Steve. I, I don't need to grow a mustache for November, 'cause I've had one for twenty, thirty years now, so. Um, anyways, um, first, I'll just wanna say that, um. If anyone wants to know my reasons for why I voted no, feel free to reach out to me. I don't feel comfortable stating them, uh, publicly. But I'd be more than happy to share them. If anyone sends me an email, drops me a message on Facebook, or whatever, we can certainly talk about it. And then, uh, congratulations to all the sports teams, and I'd like to, uh, wish a special good luck to the boys soccer team. Who will play for the state championship this Friday afternoon, I think at four forty-five. I don't know, somewhere out mid-state. I'm not quite sure.
Leamminster, yeah.
Yeah, so anyways, it's, uh, that's great that we have, uh, a potential, another, uh, state championship, uh. You know, team here in Rockland, if everything goes well on Friday, so, uh, so best of luck. That's it.
Thank you, John. That's the Select Board Member Needham.
Congratulations and thank you, Doug. Um, thrilled to have you on board for another three years. I'd like to keep it simple tonight and just wish all a happy and healthy Thanksgiving. Rockland, I am thankful that Rockland is my home. And, um, and it will continue to be one of the best decisions that I've ever made. In moving here.
Thank you, Tiffany. Rory?
Um, yeah, yay, Doug. Thank you. I'm really glad you're gonna be here another three years. Um, and Steve, as far as men stuffing their emotions, there was a brief period in American history. Between about nineteen seventy-seven and nineteen eighty-three, when the genre of yacht rock was popular. Where, you know, song, men's songwriting was all about them expressing their emotions, so. And I know that, um, there's a lot of yacht rock fans out there, so.
Okay. You didn't include that in his speech.
Yeah, I know, I'm just kinda, anyway. Um, and with all the chaos in the world, I was so happy to hear that one of our favorite people did a very heroic thing. Um, Joe, from Joe's Crazy Critters, saved a baby alligator out of the Charles River. And they, he, um, brought him to the New England Wildlife Center, where Dr. Greg Muritz, who is a personal hero of mine. Is currently nursing Charles the alligator back to health. So, Charles the alligator, I hope everybody, um, all around the South Shore, maybe everybody in the world. Should send you the good woo-woo for, for healing. Um, and, and happy Thanksgiving, everybody. I hope you, I hope you guys, uh, go on that trip to Z and high. And, you know, ha- have a great time with your families. That's it.
Thank you, Rory. Uh, so I just wanna highlight what, what a couple of the people said tonight. Uh, the Rockland High School Boys Soccer Team, uh, absolutely thrilling game last night in the freezing cold over in Watertown. Uh, they went through double overtime, all the way into penalty kicks, where, uh, their goaltender, Jason Hennessy, made two incredible saves. And, uh, is, set the boys up to be in position to play for the state title in Leamminster on Friday. Uh, what an absolute great game. I, I know that, I'm talking to Dan Kimble, the Athletic Director, and also the coach of the soccer team. Uh, they will be fan buses, try to get out there. It's, right now, they're playing against Bromfield, uh, High School. Which is in Harvard, Mass, which is about fifteen to twenty minutes from Leamminster, so they'll be heavily supported. So whatever we're able to do as a town to, to get out there and support the boys, they had an incredible game. They were down two-nothing. Uh, with fifteen minutes left in the first half, they came back, made it two to one. And then two to two before regulation. They played through two scoreless overtimes, and then won four to three in penalty kicks. Uh, I mean, it's such an incredible ex- excitement feeling for the, those kids. I mean, I, I called Doug first thing this morning, 'cause I, I know he's a, he's a soccer fan, and kind of, you know, we told the story to him. So, uh, get out there, try to support them. We don't, it's not every day that we have, uh, a potential state champion, so. That's all I have. Uh, we're going to have another executive session. Uh, this time, I'll take, entertain a motion to adjourn. Enter into executive session not to recon- convene, per Mass General Law, Chapter sixty, Section sixty-four A. To consider the retention or sale of real property after tax proposed, forty-eight B.O. Court. And per Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one A seven, review and approval of executive session minutes, ten seven twenty-five, ten twenty-one twenty-five, and eleven four twenty-five.
Motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, roll call vote. Select Person Needham?
Yes.
Select Person Elliott?
Yes.
Select Person O'Donnell?
Yes.
Press Chair Childs?
Yes.
And myself. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Night, everybody.
Have a great one.